Good evening. I'd like to call the Select Board meeting from Monday, April 28th, 2025, to order and note that we will be going into executive session and returning no sooner than 6:00 PM.
Mr. Chair, we move to enter into executive session for the following purposes. Item A, pursuant to master and law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect of collective bargaining for all town unions and non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And the chair has determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. And item B, pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations, easy for me to say, with non-union personnel, Town Administrator.
Moved in second at any discussion. Hearing none. All in favor. Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Aye.
See you at 6:00. Now, is this even on? I'd like to call back to order the Select Board meeting for April 28th, 2025, and note that we started in executive session and we did take action on item B. And I'd like to read a statement, if I may. Thank you. The Harwich Select Board announces that it has reached a mutual agreement with Joe Powers, that the last day as Town Administrator will be June 30th, 2025, the end of his current contract. On behalf of the Town, the Select Board, we would like to thank Mr. Powers for his dedicated service, his many contributions to the Town as Town Administrator. Mr. Powers looks forward to shepherding the Town through an annual Town Meeting and the remainder of this fiscal year. He offers his appreciation to the Board, the department heads, Town employees, and countless volunteers that serve the community, who he is honored to have worked with during this time in Harwich. This is the only public statement either the Board or Mr. Powers will make on this matter, as additional public commentary will only distract from joint efforts to ensure continuity of service and a smooth transition. The Board will discuss publicly its plans for a new Town Administrator search in the near future. Thank you. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and we will begin with staff comments and announcements. And there you are. Hi, Noreen.
Good evening. Noreen Donahue, Chair of the Board of Water Waste Order Commissioners. Jason Trapegnia, Superintendent, we've been here tonight, but happily, he's passing papers on a vacation property. So, I'm gonna stand in. Very recently, we became aware that there's a level of interest in a statement made in the project evaluation form submitted as part of the application for funding for the Phase 3A sewer project. Through you, Mr. Chair, since our engineer is present, I'd like to get clarification on the statement made in Part IV of that report, excuse me, which reads, "There are conditions which, quote, 'threaten the quality of the drinking water supply,' end quote. We'd appreciate Mark providing some context and background to the environmental conditions behind the statement."
Thank you, Noreen. Mark, please.
Point of order.
Excuse me?
This public comment was never designed to debate. It's on the agenda later on. If you want to bring that up, that's another story.
We are...
In public comment.
And in staff public comment, we have in the past allowed this exact interaction to happen between Mr. Jason Trapegnia and Mark Drainville.
Again, it's on the agenda.
Understood. I'm gonna allow it. Please.
Thank you. Mark Drainville with GHD. So, the application for funding that was alluded to provides an opportunity to comment on impacts that a project may have on drinking water and freshwater systems. The conditions that Noreen alluded to refer to septic systems. And septic systems in general are always considered a general concern with both drinking water and fresh waters. I wanted to stress that Phase 3A is being done for freshwater quality issues and that drinking water is not a driver, okay? The funding application itself is based on accumulation of points for different criteria, okay? And the drinking water item that Noreen alluded to represents one out of around 540 points, so it's less than 1% of the entire funding application. So, it's a miniscule portion of the application itself. And all that does is it shows the relative importance of the drinking water versus the freshwater. So, the freshwater is by far the more important part of this project. The drinking water component is not, is not a driver at all. One last point I would like to make is that I stand by what I had said a few weeks ago at an earlier meeting, that if drinking water quality was an issue, which it is not, but if it was, you wouldn't be searing two miles away from the wells. You would be searing closer to the wells. So, it just, there's a lot of things I just want to put in context that this is not a, not being done for drinking water quality concerns at all, okay?
Thank you, Mark. Any other staff, for staff comments and announcements?
Good evening. Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. Just a few updates as we approach our annual Town Election. Election Day, of course, itself is May 20th, 2025. I wanted to let folks know that we do have sample ballots, excuse me, on our website. So, if you go to the Town Clerk Department page of the Town of Harwich website, to the Election Information tab, you will see both the front side and backside of the ballot posted there. We'll have the large print copies physically posted outside of our office tomorrow morning. We're also very excited that we received our printed ballots from the vendor today, so we will begin the process of mailing ballots to any folks who have applied to vote by mail tomorrow morning. So, if you've already applied, be on the lookout in the next couple of days to whatever mailing address you gave us on your application. And for folks who wish to vote by mail but have not yet applied, it's not too late. The deadline to submit an application is Tuesday, May 13, and it has to be received in our office by 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Any other staff? Seeing none. Move to the Weekly Briefing. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. This is the Weekly Briefing that hopefully covers the period from, here we go, April 28th through May 9th. Again, we're now dealing with the two projects that are Phase 3, meaning 1 East and 2 West. 1 East, we are still having work done on Route 39, which is continued construction of the sewer collection system, the buried pipes, within the street and right-of-way on Route 39 and public property. 2 West is now progressing in the area of Martha Eaton Court and Standish Woods Circle, as well as Pleasant Bay Road. And then, we do have a perspective look for the week following, so this will be the week after Town Meeting, where we're looking at. 1 East is still on Route 39. 2 West is gonna be then, hopefully, just confined to Pleasant Bay Road. So, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, because of your meeting next week, that's why you have the look ahead for the next two weeks and the week after. And we'll resume again on the 12th.
Thank you, Joe. Now, we'll move to public comments, but before we begin public comment, and this goes to Don's point, anybody in the building tonight who wishes to speak on the Great Sand Lakes Project, which is under item 9C, that agenda item is for the Board to have a discussion on whether or not the Board feels like it wants to change its position. There will be no public input at that, at that agenda item. So, if anybody in the public, I'm giving you notice now, if anybody on the public would like to speak, public comment, now's your, now's your opportunity. So, we'll open up to public comment, and please remember we have a three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Anne Frichette, East Harwich, Great Sand Lakes Association. I'm here today with three specific asks. The first is that you provide accurate information to voters about the connection between the Great Sand Lakes Sewer Extension Project and the drinking water wells. There've been various claims made by members of this Board that there's no connection, yet I want to point out to you, as well as to the voters of the Town, that the application for this project submitted by Town Administrator Joe Powers to the State Revolving Fund states, and I'm gonna quote directly, "The groundwater travels down gradient of the Great Sand Lakes coming into contact with wells 5 through 7 in the Town of Harwich. It crosses through wells 1 through 3, 6, 7, and 9 in the Town of Chatham. The working area, along with a major of the down gradient area, is within multiple Zone 2 drinking water protection areas. Reliance on septic systems has resulted in excess phosphorus and other contaminants from Title V septic system effluent loading into the groundwater, which threatens the quality of the drinking water supply." I don't really think I need to comment more than what was put in the application, so I'm just gonna leave that there and encourage you to provide accurate information to voters on this. My second ask is that you provide accurate information about the cost of the project. There's a number of $35 million that has been proposed, but there's no construction estimates with any details whatsoever. Where does the number come from? What does it include? The State Revolving Fund application lists $22 million in construction costs, and then other costs, like $3 million in police detail. I have asked repeatedly for detailed information, and members of my neighborhood have asked repeatedly for detailed information. I've put in two public records requests, as Emily will confirm, and I just think, you know, it's really important to voters to defend a number, that's a big number, but to defend the number that you're just throwing out there. I think it's important that we all see construction costs. In fact, well, I won't go into that. But what makes the lack of cost information even more troubling is that Harwich received $660,000 in ARPA funds for the design of this project, and according to the Barnstable County ARPA administrators, $200,000 has been spent. That's part of the reason that I and my neighbors have been asking repeatedly. We know money's been spent on something. We assumed the money was being spent on a report. We actually were so hopeful that the report might have included the stuff that we talked about with Dan Pelletier and with Russ Kleecamp, where we were talking about a total watershed solution, but we don't actually know.
30 seconds, Anne.
Okay. My third ask is that you vote today in support of Article 20. What Article 20 enables Harwich to do is to move forward with a $31 million State Revolving Fund allocation toward a project that Harwich taxpayers will have to pay for someday anyway. By not supporting Article 20, what you're asking Harwich taxpayers to do is to pay millions of dollars more than we have to at some point in the future.
Thank you, Anne.
The deadline for passing the Warren article is June 30th. I ask that you vote in favor of Article 20 today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And I have to, hold on one sec, if you don't mind. I have to back up. I did skip staff comment and announcements. Select Board Member Howell, do you want to, Memorial Day, do you wanna?
I would be proud to represent us with the proclamation.
Absolutely, and thank you. And that's gonna be Monday, May 26th, 2025, at 9:30 AM at Brooks Park in Harwich Center. And Select Board Member Howell, as he always does, and does so well, he will be representing our Board. Anybody else for public comment? Thanks for the reminder.
Valerie Bell, Harwich Energy and Climate Action Committee. I just want to make a little clarification on, under New Business B, where discussion on the Climate Leader Community Certification for Harwich. When I came to you the last time, mainly what I was asking you is to apply for the grant that would help us create the roadmap to let us apply to become a climate leader. So, the July 25th would just be the, for us to get the help.
So, you're gonna have your opportunity under the agenda item to clear that up first, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Oh, hold on, Charles. You're getting beat. Ladies first. She had you on the inside anyway. She's gonna get there way before you.
Debra Ennis, Harwich Climate Action Network. And I and other members of our group who can't be here tonight support Valerie's proposal about applying for this money so that Harwich can be more forward-moving, like other towns on the Cape, towards addressing the effects of climate change. So, we want to encourage you to follow up from two weeks ago when Valerie presented the proposal tonight by accepting the chance to get the consultation monies and grant for the next steps towards climate leader. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Michael.
With that said, and with the pointing out that the agenda item doesn't cover the actual ask, I would ask that you bring this back next week and not make anyone stay in the audience tonight for something that we're, or week after Town Meeting, to stay for something that we're not gonna be able to talk about.
Point well taken. Unfortunately, I, I, I think there's a deadline to this, and if we wait, we may miss that deadline.
I understand the deadline, but if it's not agenda properly, I don't see how we can discuss it.
Well, I mean, I don't mind whatever the Board wants to do, but you've got discussion on Climate Leader Community Certification for Harwich. To Val's point, it's a grant for us go, you've gotta apply for the grant to go forward, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, it's part of the certification.
Absolutely. It's a step in that process, yes.
Right. It's just a clarification that you're not gonna get the certification until you apply for the grant. So, I think you're covered under the agenda.
Don?
I'll make matters even muddier. The minutes that we're gonna be approving for April 15th from the two weeks ago, I had one very specific ask, matrix, that showed where the stretch code is now and what the responsibilities were, building under, the matrix.
I sent something to Jeff.
Come, come back up if you, well.
We don't have it. I don't have it. I don't believe I have that.
It was a link to, the state has that matrix on their, on their website.
That's not what I asked.
Comparing the stretch code to the...
Well, I asked, there was a slide that showed currently required, required if you would accept the enhanced stretch code, because in order to do the grant, you're implicitly going to be accepting...
No. The, the...
You're gonna walk away from it after you hire a grantee?
You can. You certainly can. The roadmap is Harwich's time to sit down and say, okay, if we wanted to do this, what would be the plan?
Okay, hold, I'm gonna stop everything right here. No, and I understand. So, here's what I'm gonna do, because this deserves the attention. We are in public comment. After we're done with public comment, I'll move this up.
Okay.
And then we can discuss whether or not this is something that we can have a discussion on tonight. But I still want to stick with the public comment if I could. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? I know Mr. Gruska's there, and now's your chance. Hurry up. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Charles Gruska, 6 T-Berry Ave. Mr. Chair, I may have some comments relative to item 9C, Article 9, the Monmoy Middle School Siding Project.
Do you wanna wait?
Should I hold those for, when it comes up on the agenda?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Please.
Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road, North Chatham. I just wanted to let everybody know I am running for Select Board in Chatham, and one of my priorities is to return families to Chatham and get more kids into the school system. So, if you could tell all your friends in Chatham to vote for me, that'd be great. Thanks a lot.
You're presuming we have friends in Chatham.
We may not be the ones you want to be pitching to right now, but I'll keep it in mind. Thank you for being here, and best of luck in your race. Give a lot of credit to anyone who puts their hat in the ring. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, online. Who do I have? Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew.
Andrew Godley.
Yep. I see you with the little hand up. Please.
Andrew Godley, representing the Association of Preserve Cape Cod, region's largest environmental advocacy and nonprofit educational organization. I'd like to ask you to reconsider your vote and support Article 20. Couple things. One, you know, I wouldn't get hung up on what this project doesn't do and focus on what it does. By applying to the State Revolving Fund for support, you competed in a pool of statewide projects. Your project came in above the funding line and beat out dozens of other projects statewide. You're the 21st most impactful wastewater management project in the state. Think about that for a minute when you think about whether this is a project that's worth doing. It will reduce the nutrient load and reduce the phosphorus loading into Great Sands Pond because the discharge location is outside the bounds of the watershed in Chatham. It's 100% reduction from the septic systems removed of nitrogen and phosphorus to that freshwater system. This project by itself doesn't solve all of Great Sand Lake area's project problems, but there are very few singular silver bullets of complex issues anywhere in the world. The fact that it doesn't solve all your problems doesn't mean that it doesn't go a long way towards solving your major problem, which is nutrient loading in these systems, and that alone merits its consideration. If you're going to do this project eventually, which your plan says you're going to do, now is the cheapest time for you to do it for the taxpayers of your community. As someone who used to run the State Revolving Loan Fund Program, I can assure you that the funding for this project is secure. By getting the zero-interest loan from the Commonwealth, you will get a contract from a bidder. The state will interim finance that project, and you will not be on the hook to permanently finance that project until it's paid for and completed, at which point the loan amount will be adjusted to your actual expenditures. You would qualify for a zero-interest loan, and importantly, you would qualify for 25% principal forgiveness. So, on that 31-odd million dollar construction estimate, that approaches $8 million that would come off of the funding obligation that the Town's taxpayers will be anticipated to cover by being paid for from proceeds for, from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust. That Board is meeting tomorrow and will be making awards to all the communities on Cape Cod that are on this 25, 2025 funding list. So, you will have the ability to walk into your Town Meeting on Monday next week, knowing that you have a voted-on allocation of funding from the Cape and Islands Trust, and you qualify for the SRF funding. This year...
That's three minutes, Andrew. I gotta, I gotta stop you there. That's your three-minute mark.
This is your best chance to get it funded at the lowest possible cost. I urge you to reconsider your vote and support it. And I thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for, for being here, online. Anybody else for public comment? All right, hearing none. Let's, let's move to the consent agenda, and then we can, because Mr. Howell mentioned the minutes. So, let's, let's go to the consent agenda. Pete?
Mr. Chair, through you, is there any member that would like any item removed? Hearing no one. Move to approve the following Select Board meeting minutes, January 30th, 2025, February 6th, 2025, April 7th, 2025, April 14th, 2025. Item B, accept a gift in the amount of $3,500 from Jan Kalikki for the purchase, installation, and care of a memorial bench at a mutually agreeable, agreeable location. And item C, vote to approve the committee appointment of Janet Saviski, as recommended by the interview committee to the Board of Health, term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Moved in second at any discussion.
The only comment I had was Page 3 of the April 7th minutes. Just changed that to conservation. It says conversation.
Conversation about conservation? Thank you, Julie, and I'll just say thank you. Oh, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, just one. I don't see any information in my packet related to see the appointment of Janet Saviski.
It's in there.
It's in there, yeah.
Give me a page, give me a page.
I'll get you a page. Page 58, 59?
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's one of those two.
Yeah, 59.
59. There it is.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The only thing I'll say is a great thank you to Janet for stepping up and being part of Town in a bigger way and be part of the committee, and to Jan Kalikki for the nice donation for the bench.
Mr. Chair, could I just, for the record?
Please.
Jan Kalitsky.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, just what he said. My apologies. It'll be pronounced that way in the minutes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, what I was looking for, for information, was the application. So, all I'm looking at is the recommendation from the interview committee, similar to what the agenda. So, maybe the interview committee could just tell the rest of the Board a little bit about Jan. But...
Sorry, no.
No?
Janet is Janet Saviski.
All right. You know what I'm saying.
I do.
But maybe we can get a brief overview, and for future, I think we're supposed to have at least packet material would be the application.
Sorry, that was an oversight, because that was included with our consideration. She is an RN, works for Cape Cod Hospital. She was actually recruited by us to put in an application for this. So, she, she was fully qualified. She's lived here for five years, and she was asked specifically if she could make the commitment for the dates, the third Tuesday. She can do that, and she looks forward to being a contributing member as somebody who has a skill set in health.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Michael. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Joe?
Thank you.
And now, let's bring back up Val, and we will get to the bottom of this.
Oh, and the, I sent you an email on April 8th, for which you did reply, and there's a PDF that speaks directly to Don's question.
Okay.
It talks about the difference between the stretch code and the specialized stretch code.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you're taking item B ahead of item...
Yeah, we're gonna take item B ahead of item A under New Business. Please.
I might point out, before you start, that's not the way government works. It should have been in a packet that the public could see so that we could have a discussion about that. That's why I asked for it as a slide, is really what I asked.
Or a PDF. Or a PDF, a document.
I did not ask for a PDF. I asked for a slide that could give you a detailed breakdown of what the cost was for each one of those. It's in the minutes. It was at the meeting that you were...
Right, but I missed, I thought you just wanted a, something to compare the specialized code with the stretch code.
We were looking to see what the additional expense would be.
I don't think there is a slide to that. Nobody, I mean, I, that's very hypothetical.
But as somebody who, in my other life, builds affordable housing, and every time the owning, the building codes go up, so does the price of building.
I mean, I'm assuming that the upfront cost would be more than not having the specialized stretch code, but I don't think there's a document out there right now that the specifics, because it really would depend on the equipment you're buying and the size of the house and, you know, that type of thing. But I will look to see what's, what's out there. Meanwhile, you know, you can look at that PDF, but...
The reason I said that is because I understand, and you can, when you give your presentation, we can get deeper into this, but I understand that when you're building under the Enhanced Stretch Code, that that's part of the occupancy certificate. They look at your appliances also.
Absolutely.
And so, there has to be a base level difference in the appliances themselves, which would be consequential.
Right, so you would be using...
Get a certificate of occupancy or not.
Right, so you'd be using heat pumps versus regular. You would be using induction stoves. You would be using...
All that's an expense. That's what I was looking for, a number.
Right, right. But, but just like any appliance, there's different levels and, you know. Anyway, I will try to get something to that. Meanwhile, you can look at that PDF that I sent, that's from the state, that kind of goes through the stretch code and then the specialized stretch code and kind of points out where the differences are going to be if you accept it. There are towns on the Lower Cape that are already using the specialized stretch code, so, you know, we would have local people that we could ask, you know, just, just see how it's turning out. So, just wanted to, you know, clarify that the process to become a Climate Leader Community is, it's a process, and one of the steps in that process is to create a roadmap, which is just a document that's going to tell the state that Harwich has decided to take these steps at this particular time. So, for example, you know, the people in Orleans, they may decide to... So, for example, you know, the people in Orleans, they may decide to immediately go to the town meeting with a specialized stretch code and deal with solar or e-electric vehicles later. Harwich may want to do something different. We may want to look at electric vehicles first and put off the specialized stretch code for a couple of years. The point to the roadmap is that you get to decide this. You sit down with an expert from the state that walks you through the steps of creating this roadmap, this plan, which would help you qualify to be a climate leader community. Once you've got that document, the next step would be to pass that specialized stretch code and move on. And we're, we're not talking about doing it this year. We're talking about getting this roadmap done so we have an idea. Now, the board, whatever the composition of the board will be next month, you, as you sit down with a state expert and, and go over this with the department heads and the, and people, people that are interested in this process, Harwich may decide, no, I don't think this is for us. You know, I don't think we can, we can do this. I hope that's not the outcome, but it's, you can't do that. You are not obligating the town to anything by getting this consultant to come and help you do the roadmap. Because the application to become a climate leader community is a whole separate application process. We're just trying to get an expert to come help us plan. That's what, that's all we're looking for right now. The application needs to be in by July 25th, I think I said the last time I was here. So it's no cost to the town, no obligation to the town. It's just getting a state expert to come and sit with whoever you decide are going to be the people that are going to have input into this process and come up with this document.
Thank you. Any of the board, please?
I'm still on the same, I think you understand. I voted for the original green communities.
Right, right.
But there was a lot more information.
We're not voting on climate leader.
How much does this consultant cost?
Nothing, zero. This is funded by the state. The state sends this person-
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the intern.
Oh, we're not talking about, the intern is a whole separate thing, and to be honest with you, did they ever get back to you from the-
Sure, we're, yes.
Yeah, and that's not, that has nothing to do with climate leader. That, that's a whole separate thing, which may or may not happen, you know, but the climate leader help or grant is really the important one that really is going to put us in a good position to either move forward or not, but hopefully move forward. And there's, you know, a lot of community people are, are kind of hoping that this is the direction that we go.
So Val, to, to Don's point, just to close the loop on your question, I'm trying to help here, is, it probably won't be too helpful, but we'll see. The intern, the cost of the intern is, is, is between $2,500 and $5,000, and we're looking to get a little relief because the, the cost has changed over the last month.
Right. Now, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the intern program has absolutely nothing to do with climate leader.
Correct.
It's two separate issues.
But you are asking us-
Yes.
-to vote to see if the town would support having an intern. That, that is one of your asks.
That's not what was on the agenda.
I, I agree with that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm just trying, like I said, and I'm definitely being not so helpful here.
Yeah.
But I think that's where you were getting cost from.
Yeah, the only thing that's, that's all I was saying. The only thing that's missing in this is that we're in a different spot from you are. You're advocating something, we're in a government. He got the link. We didn't. And by extension, nobody in the public did either.
I don't, I, can I just?
It's, it's a public body.
Sure.
I guess, I'm just trying to- Don, you're way ahead of yourself. That has nothing to do with-
Yeah, I, I think what we're talking about tonight-
Yeah.
-is what you talked about to us, whatever date it was-
Yeah.
-about putting in the grant application.
Yes, which was in your packet.
Right.
Yeah.
To get the, to get the person from the state to come to sit, to develop the roadmap, to put this information together, to say, this is what it would take.
Right.
These are the different parameters.
Yes.
Does Harwich have any interest in doing this?
Right.
Would you still have the opportunity to say, no, we don't?
Right, right.
And, and back to the question on a slide that shows, you know, what the existing code is to the more complex code, I would also say, and I'm gonna call on Craig Gabrie if I'm wrong, I believe that the new code that has the more advanced requirements still isn't truly in effect because every town, right, is waiting for guidance on how to even put that into effect. So even asking for that kind of matrix isn't even developable at this point because that new code is not in place.
From my understanding, the town of Harwich is still struggling to fulfill the requirements of the regular stretch code.
Right, and, and all, I think, just for Harwich's sake, so many towns are trying to look at what the new code will be.
Yeah.
So that is accurate because I'm getting the nod, so.
But, but in the big picture, what we have today is the stretch code-
Right.
-that we're obligated to use.
Right.
That was once considered the opt-in-
Exactly, yeah.
Of the green communities and-
Right, right.
But now, you know, and so every stretch, every time you, the, the code has changed, you know, it pushes everybody a little bit more in that direction.
Right.
So now it's an opt-in. In a couple more years, it might be the, the code, you know, that nobody-
And it will be eventually, but like what I'm just trying to point out is that the slide that we're even looking for, you couldn't even do it-
Nope.
-because that's not even in place.
Not available.
That is the new code, but it's not, you know, in, in effect.
Right.
So back to the thing what we're talking about tonight, which is literally just getting the grant application submitted by the deadline, Val working with staff to get that in-
Yeah.
-and then ultimately, the state would then come to us, hopefully would get the grant. I think it's pretty much a no-brainer, right?
Right, right. They want everybody to do it, you know, so.
And then you would work with the state.
It doesn't cost anything, and you're not obligated.
And there's no commitment.
You know, it's just, just help. Yeah.
Joe? If we're speaking in the packet to the document that reads D-O-E-R Municipal Carbonization Planning Assistance, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, I think the board should be aware that on page three in your, of this application packet, in your packet, it talks about the background and the purpose and the eligibility. So under eligibility, it says that communities must meet the following. Being an existing green community in good standing, we are. Number two, have a local body that advises the municipality on clean energy and climate initiatives. We do. Number three, commit to eliminate onsite fossil fuel use by 2050.
And we do have that. I, I spoke to the state-
Chair, if I could, I do have the-
Val, just-
Sorry.
If you don't mind, just let Joe finish. Thank you.
Because I'm not looking to be argumentative.
Right.
Understood. Thank you. I'm just trying to put everything out there for all parties. So we have an act five years ago, I believe. I think it's prudent, and this may be where the board members are coming from, for all parties to be mindful of that explicit commitment. Yes, we have a non-binding vote of town meeting from five years ago, but the application process, the guidance we'd be seeking, starts out with us absolutely committing to that in 25 years. Now, I am not in any way, shape, or form saying what I think about that personally. I am merely talking about, as your agent who is authorized to apply for grants, if the select board wants to pursue this grant, I can complete this tomorrow. But all parties should be aware, and there are more obligations that go with that.
If you're to adopt-
If you, right, if you go forward to become-
Right.
-a climate leader, absolutely, you have to commit to all six of those that he just read off.
But this is to just get the guidance on creating the roadmap to-
Right, which is number three, four, I think, on the list of what you have to do, so.
All right, so I'm just gonna, do you-
Just want to finish my point.
Sorry, please.
Because I understand all of that.
Yeah.
And I understand how grants work, but I think it's dangerous for all parties to sit here tonight and say, there's nothing to it. There is something significant to it. So again, if you did, if you opt to go for the grant, we'll go for it, but I, I think you do a disservice if you don't put out all the obligations that are out there, especially where we're a week from town meeting, and I anticipate questions on anything. One of them could be, where is the town on its commitment to 2050? And the answer is not far at all, but I'm concerned about the way the conversation's going. If this board decides tonight that a grant should be applied for, you've authorized the town administrator by charter and by job description to do that. And we can do that, but there needs to be a broader conversation that wouldn't just be this evening, on the stretch code presently, and on the future obligations. Because we're not meeting all of our requirements. We are a green community in good standing. I'm now done.
I'm waiting. Okay, thank you.
I now yield.
Did you?
I, I think, you know, again, I'm looking at it as what we're talking about applying for, for the grant, and we understand going forward, if we were to come back with the roadmap and we were to come with the consensus that we wanted to go forward, of course, we need full information. Everybody needs to understand what we would be signing up for. But in terms of trying, and this board can bring it back. I, I don't mind if we bring it back. I mean, sorry, Val, if you have to come back again, but you want to bring it back again, but, but alls we're talking about is getting the assistance from the state for free to develop a roadmap to discuss. Nothing else is going to happen other than that.
Right.
So.
Many towns are, before this opportunity became available from the state, towns were actually doing this on their own. They were having their, you know, the climate roadmap, you know, and, and creating it themselves. I think Orleans even hired a consultant, you know, to, to help them develop their climate action document. The state is trying to help with that by providing a guideline.
So that, that, that all makes sense.
Yeah.
And, and I appreciate that, Joe. I appreciate your, your opinion and, and your statement, or your facts, I'll say, not your opinion. At this point, and, and just, just so the board hears, your email to me, I forwarded to the board on the 8th.
Okay.
So the board does have-
And I, and I, I take the point of not having it public, yeah.
The whole board has the documentation that you provided to me, or the slides or whatever. And I will say that this is probably not gonna happen tonight, this vote. I think just from hearing the board, there's an awful lot more information and, and thought that needs to go into this. And if I heard you right earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you said July-
25th.
So we have a little bit of time.
Yep.
Let us get through town meeting, which I think was the, the, this is my era. I, I will fall on the sword on this one.
I was surprised it was on the agenda today.
Right, well, you know, when, when we were emailing back and forth, I, I had asked you, is there a deadline to this intern? Because that seemed like what you were asking me. I probably misread it.
Yeah.
So, so that's why we're here tonight, but I think we'll table this, and we'll bring it back after town meeting when we've all had a little bit of a chance to breathe.
Perfect, perfect.
But I think Don wants to say one more thing.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Howell?
And I appreciate what the administrator had said earlier, because I've been doing this a really long time. I really want to get us to a point where, you know, I'm committed to this. We've had lots of meetings over this. But in my long time being involved with the government, grants are contracts. You give us something, and we give you something, and they're contractually obligated. I would love to know, even to get us into that first phase, what is it they're asking us to commit to? Because there's, it can't be no commitment. There has to be some commitment.
Well, there-
And by the way, the public still needs to see that other link.
Understood. That'll be in the next packet for sure.
And, and I think what the state is saying is that if you apply for this grant, you are interested in, in becoming a climate leader, and you are interested in all of that.
You'll forgive me, but I'm not interested in what I think the state is saying.
Yeah.
There has got to be a grant document that has parameters about how you apply for it and what they expect, so.
Joe has the grant. You guys had it in your packet. That's all they have. You can read that page by page. It does not say that you are obligated to anything.
I'm, I'm gonna-
You're gonna stop it, but before, one last thing is, on Wednesday, May 14th, and I will email this to you, Jeff, if, there is going to be an introduction to climate leader communities Zoom, sponsored by the state. It will be run by our, the, the woman who is in charge of our region of Massachusetts related to climate leader things, and, and it's going to be at 7:00 PM. I'll leave this with you. I'll also email it to you, and it's sponsored by the Cape Cod Climate Action Network and the Energy and Climate Committees of Cape and Islands. And I'll be on it. You give, you know, email me a list of your questions if you can't be there, but it'd be great if one of the select people could be on that Zoom to, to ask all of these questions that you're asking me of Lisa Sullivan, who is the person-
Thank you.
-I've been talking to.
I nominate Don to be on the, I'm the liaison.
But I'm just as interested in knowing if there's somebody from the state that's on there, because nothing-
Lisa Sullivan, she is our state chief for climate leader stuff.
Thank you. John, do you have something we want to?
Yeah, just real quick. I'm John Carey of West Harwich. Miss Valerie, please don't shoot the messenger, but I just built 10 units of housing. I built them as affordably and as quality as you can. I spent about $250,000 per unit, and I'd say $40,000 of that is directly related to the stretch code, which is a higher-level energy code than Barnstable has. So I think item D, because I did review your document last time, I think item D had something about a higher-level stretch code that would be required to meet. So as this town talks about trying to build housing affordably, when you increase this to a higher energy rating, it gets scary expensive. So I'm just letting you guys know, I'm a team player. Whatever the town wants to do, I'll build to that, but the cost will go up if you raise the energy code in this town.
Thank you.
So just to clarify on that point, that goes back to the question I was raising about where are we with the new code? Because there is a new code. It's just not in effect. Harwich isn't enforcing it currently, and other towns aren't enforcing it, but it's, it's the-
You have to go to the mic if you want to.
So basically-
The 10th edition is coming.
Right, and we're not-
So we're not there yet, but the next project will be there.
So a lot of this is playing into that, so.
Michael?
No, just for the record, I, I think it's important that the quote-unquote "experts" from the state that we keep hearing about all get together, because as we just heard from the developer and the Barnstable County delegates and their housing crisis that we're in, they ought to talk to the folks that have the 40B laws, because all we're doing is building giant projects and moving more people into the community with very little of it being affordable and increasing our building costs, and then circle back and complain about money constantly. So it'd be nice if the experts would, but just for the record tonight, totally against becoming a climate leader until the experts actually get together and start talking to each other, because we're working ourselves backwards, and we're making people move out of this community. And to think that we're gonna go to fossil-free, and, and to me, it was a no vote tonight anyway, because just the fact that it's in the criteria, I'm signing my name to something I completely do not agree with and that this town cannot afford.
Thank you, Michael. Julie?
Just a follow-up on that. In terms of the construction code, though, that's completely separate from any of these experts in terms of energy and consulting. The construction code is completely separate. That hasn't been in effect yet, so.
All right, thank you. Joe? Joe?
So Mr. Chairman, recognizing that one member spoke to it, what I'm trying to convey is, all of these programs, these opportunities, these goals are out there. To me, the real question for the select board first, and that's why I mentioned town meeting as well, because I think at some point you're going to want the legislative body to weigh in. Does the town of Harwich want to be a community climate leader? When you went through the process of becoming a green community, you had those conversations. And so for me, yes, it is a grant, or an intern, or something else where there's load and no cost upfront, but really, the question before the five of you, and your successors perhaps, is, does this town want to be known as a climate leader as the state defines it? Because there are towns that are doing it, but if you look at what we are struggling with on Cape Cod, and to my colleagues and dear friends in Orleans, their efforts came from two years ago when the county asked all 15 of us, did we want to go in on a thing? And my answer for the town, because we had to give an answer that day, was the majority answer for, I believe, 12 of the 15 communities. We don't know what that's going to cost us, we don't know what that commitment's going to be. So my encouragement is, think of this in terms of, do you want to be what the state is offering, a climate leader as they describe it? Because this town has been a green community, and that may be the next step.
Thank you. Julie?
I just, just to follow up, I think the point is, we need that roadmap to figure out what we do want and what we don't want. And so to me, if a roadmap is going to be part of something that we get as information to compare, maybe we don't want to be one. But we won't know that till we have the information and the guidance to figure out, what are the costs? What else do we have to do? If it's going to be outrageous, or if it's going to meet the building code, then we're going to have to do it anyway. So I guess that's my point, is let's find out the information and figure it out, we can come back with whatever else information people want, but to Joe's point of what we should be answering, we still need that roadmap to answer those questions.
Noreen?
Yes, thank you. Could I ask just one question? Because I was around back when we went through the green community process, and the many stages involved, and started using the grant programs that came out of that afterwards. If Harwich does not go forward for whatever reasons, do they still have access to the funds that were, you know, managed by the Green Communities Program? Will they still exist, that list of where we got up to a few hundred thousand for boilers and generators every other year, things like that? Just curious.
Joe?
So the answer is yes, unless the state changes the program. In other words, we are a green community. The next level, if you will, to level up, as video game kids say, would be a climate leader. So that program, we're still part of it, we're still certified, and unless the Commonwealth changes it, we're still in that situation.
All right, thank you. Val, thanks for being here again tonight. Please. And now we will entertain new business item A, discussion on finance director interviews. Votes may be taken. I see Karen Shanley online, thank you for being here, Karen, I appreciate it and all the work you've done for us so far. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, I do hear you.
There you are.
Thank you.
And thank you. So the board has had the interviews with four candidates, and I want to publicly thank them for taking their time and sitting with us for about 35 minutes to an hour each. They were all excellent candidates, they all were qualified, and, you know, very enthusiastic about working for the town of Harwich. My interest tonight is to see if the board has had ample time to review some of the extra information that we've received, and if there is an opportunity tonight to move forward with maybe narrowing the field from four to two, or four to three, or four to one, or, so I'm going to open it up to the board to hear how the board feels about if they're ready or not tonight to move in that direction. Who wants to start?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
The simple answer is yes, I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you.
The long-winded answer, and I'll probably forget half of it, so we'll do the best we can.
Midwinded.
Yeah, we'll do the best we can. And I think as you just stated, we had four strong candidates before us last week, or 10 days ago, and I think each of them brought a different strength. And so it was, it was nice to see the selection, the varied selection that we had before us. Ideally, we would have had, you know, a few hundred people applying for this job, but that wasn't the case. But nonetheless, I think we, in my opinion, I think we saw two candidates that stood above the field, and not, you know, overwhelmingly, but I think they both possessed the practical experience, having already done the job in other communities. Personally, you know, I think I leaned towards one over the other of those two, however, I'm open to discuss either of those this evening. So again, I am ready this evening, if the others are so inclined, and I'd be happy to hear their thoughts.
Thank you, Pete. And let's, to that point, let's see how the other, the board members feel, if they're ready to begin the process of narrowing it down a little. How about Michael?
I would echo Pete's comments about thanking all the applicants and qualified applicants, and they all did a fantastic job in what I would consider a tough situation. I too am ready to move on, and I too have picked two that I think stood out, and in no particular order, I will state those, but both very close, the extra information was helpful, and I did have a follow-up question that I got answered. So I'm ready to move on.
Okay, Don? Bless you.
Bless you.
Excuse me.
I'm in the same spot, but let me back up a little bit to fill in a little bit more about what was said about the four candidates. It's not always what the candidates themselves possess as strengths, it's also about what the town needs to fill our own perceived weaknesses. So there is no aspersions being cast on anybody. All four of these candidates were smart people, were capable people, and it's going to boil down to what we need at the moment to move forward, because we have been stuck in a quagmire for about two years in our finances, and we can't afford to keep doing that. We had set up a construct where we have a finance director that reports to a board, which is an actual unusual circumstance, and we asked that as one of our first questions, have you ever had an experience dealing with a five-member board, or four of them? That was a separator for me, in part. And given that, it's really important to find somebody that can create another pillar, be able to operate within the context of what the town administrators are saying, so we get really strong and vital information, and we can confirm, that doesn't get filtered in any way. So it's really important that we have somebody that's familiar with managing other resources to be able, so I too have two people that I'm thinking of, but it in no way diminishes the other two that I'm not thinking of, because they all had skill sets, it's just not what we really need right now.
Well put, Don. Julie?
So I would echo all of that, I think that all the candidates were strong, I certainly have my top two, and I'll leave it at that, I think they're all well-qualified.
Thank you. And I'm ready to move as well, so maybe if it suits the board, I will ask each member for their two candidates, and I will keep track, and we'll see how it shakes out, and then have more discussion. Is that fine with the board? All right, Michael, your two, please.
Brittany and Jennifer. And that's Brittany Iacopone and Jennifer Mince.
Julie, your two, please.
Mine, Megan Green and Brittany Iacopone.
Don?
Brittany Iacopone and Jennifer Mince.
Pete?
Same, Brittany and Jennifer.
And I also echo Brittany and Jennifer. So publicly, I want to make it very clear to Megan and Samantha, they did one hell of a job. To Don's point, the town's looking for some specifics, but they did a fantastic job with their interviews, presented well, and bless you out there, just can't say enough about how they both interviewed before us. Don?
If I could just add one thing, because this isn't just about the interviews. I personally, I'm pretty sure that everybody on this board feels the same way, a deep sense of gratitude for Megan in operating in the environment that she has operated in the last year, she has been outstanding, she's bright, she's intelligent, and I still feel that at some point in time, with the right tutelage, she's going to wind up running a finance department somewhere. But more than that, I appreciate all of the effort that she put through, because in large measure, she has kept it together for us.
100%. And again, thank you to Karen for all the legwork she did in forwarding us the extra information. All right, now the board can deliberate on Brittany and Jennifer, and I would be open to hearing any of the board's comments. Positively, of course. Pete?
You know, I see both of them bring in, as I alluded to earlier, a little different mindset to this position. They both have, clearly have strengths in this role. One of them, Brittany has certainly spent 10-plus years, I believe, as a finance director, and Jennifer, albeit somewhat shorter period of time, as an actual finance director, has been doing it on an interim basis in one of our neighboring communities since April of '23. So that means a lot to my thought process, as well as the town accountant. You know, I have reservations on both of them as well, but, you know, I think if I were to sit here and need to choose one of the two this evening, I'd probably lean towards Brittany tonight. But again, happy to hear other comments from my colleagues, because I certainly would not rule out Ms. Mince.
Thank you, Pete. Julie?
So I will speak to Brittany, I certainly would put Jennifer in category as well, but I'll speak to Brittany, because that's who my nominations were for. I think that Brittany did a good job in terms of the questions asked about the process and the procedures that she's currently dealing with, in her current position, and what she would do in terms of how she would take Harwich's role, and what she would do first out of the gate in the first three months, in terms of closing the books and getting certified free cash, et cetera. So I'm open to further discussion on the other candidate as well, but I would say that she also talked about her extensive dealings with the finance committee, and she talked in great depth about her municipal debt experience, and this board has focused tremendously on that, and obviously CPA and all that, so I'll leave it at that.
Don?
Well, no. I tend to agree with Pete, it's not 100% asset and no liability for either candidate, but I was impressed with Jennifer, because if we're looking for somebody as a self-starting manager, she literally went at the end of the interview and tried to close the deal and started doing a sales job to get it, which is impressive, because that means that she can speak for herself. On the other hand, my gut feeling is that you're not hiring somebody in this position for the entertainment value. You're hiring somebody in a field that generally doesn't have a lot of personality, and I'm looking more for the numbers, the predictions, the availability of information on demand in any way we want to configure it. And I just, my gut feeling is that Brittany is in a better position to be able to provide that information. So she would be my first choice.
Thank you. Don, Michael?
I would agree, Brittany would be my first choice, and it's based on what we went out for in experience, on paper and actual experience, and Brittany just edges out Jennifer, and I think Jennifer is a very, very close second, but I am, I'm for Brittany.
Thank you, Michael. I don't have anything to add, I think you all have covered it. Someone want to make a motion?
A move that we enter into negotiations with Brittany Iacopone, with the goal of hiring her as our finance director.
Second.
Moved in second, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Joe 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Karen, thank you again, couldn't have done it without you.
But we need to also send thank you letters out to.
Absolutely.
They were terrific individuals.
They were, all were fantastic. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item C. Joe, do we need to know anything about this, or are we ready for a motion?
Whatever you need to know is covered in the Assistant Town Administrator's report.
Thank you.
That's one of the joys of being the ATA, you get to sit through those poll hearings. Staff recommends adoption of both.
Motion to approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission by Enstar Electric DPA Eversource Energy to install one push brace, 34/4 PB, which will be attached to existing pole four on the southerly side of Northern Ave at the southwestern intersection with Lincoln Ave.
Second. Kind of hazy exercise then, Joe. Moved in seconded, discussion, Julie?
So the only thing I noticed in Megan's information in this packet was that there was, initially, the Eversource representative noted it as well, that something was done on a property owner's property, and that there was discussions happening, so I just want to make sure that that property owner has been satisfied. I know that was called out in this, and that conversations were underway. So that'd be my only question.
Any other discussion? Or Joe, do you want to?
No, just that staff, my understanding is, staff are recommending it because of that situation.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0, Joe.
Thank you.
Item D?
Motion to approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission by Enstar Electric DPA Eversource Energy to place one J.O. pole, P dot 19, on the northerly side of Gilbert Lane to the point, plus or minus 30 feet, southwesterly from existing pole, P 16, on the corner of Lothrup and Gilbert Lane.
Second. Moved in seconded, any discussion? Don?
I only say this because it's one of those moments of leverage that we have, dealing with Eversource. Do we have, I know this is a silly question, and it's not rhetorical, do we have any doubled poles that are sitting out there waiting for us to request of them to do a post? Because this is the only kind of leverage moment that we have.
So generally, no, we don't. The process is, they reach out to the Public Works Department, so anything that we request is transmitted to them. More often than not, we're still waiting on the utilities to finish their work.
Well, that's what I mean, because we generally, there's always at least a dozen or so paired poles around this town, where they seem to be growing old together.
I think the safe answer is, is both utility providers are aware of the town's requests for many of the double poles.
You good? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, 5-0, Joe.
Thank you.
Then we have a discussion and possible vote to approve a 2025 Long Pond Bass Tournament.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I move that we vote to approve the 2025 Long Pond Bass Tournaments as presented.
Moved in seconded, any discussion?
Only discussion is, I'd like to make a recommendation to the Recreation Youth Committee to study or talk to the state about what effects this has on the smallmouth as they're spawning. All these tournaments fall on spawning time for them, and I'm not sure that they've ever requested the state to weigh in on what the actual effects of the fish are. I know it's catch and release, but once you pull them off the bed, they don't generally go back.
So if I'm hearing you right, and it would be okay with you, I'll have the REC director watch this video and follow up with your question.
Or call me and I'll explain.
Or call you and you'll explain it, or we'll, I'm sorry, that's a good point. If I'm hearing you right, Michael, I will talk to the town administrator.
Or the town administrator heard everything, we'll work with staff.
That's what we'll do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the commentary, we'll definitely look into that.
All right. Item F.
Oh, and?
Nope, I'm sorry.
A little further discussion, if I could?
Yes, please, Pete?
First comment is, I'd love one in the bag of this legible going forward. I can't read a damn thing as far as the title of these things, but rather than delaying it. As the, as the Rec and Youth Committee voted on this, do we know?
I don't know that they've expressly voted on it. I know this came to my staff from staff of REC.
If I may.
Michael?
Pete, every year they do vote on that, and it's a recommendation from them, it goes to them first, and then to us.
To the committee?
Yes.
Okay.
How many years have they done this, Michael, do you know?
As long as I've been around.
Really?
Longer than that, even.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hello?
Oh, sorry, do we have a virtual hand up somewhere? Yes, Patrick Otten.
Yeah, hello. Just want to make the comment that Long Pond is a public recreation area with public access, and to have bass fishermen in boats, what, 2,000 pounds, driving around with 250-horse motors, could be a dangerous situation. I participate in Cape Cod community rowing. We are in boats that are 14 inches wide, 24 feet long, weigh 30 pounds, a rower can generate at max a quarter horsepower at full tilt. So I think it's wise to put out a cautionary recommendation, that speed limits be watched, that bass fishermen pay attention to where they're going, and not just racing as quickly as they can to the next location to catch the next fish. There is a public access there, and they need to be considered as well as the bass fishermen when they're driving at higher speeds. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Any other discussion?
You were calling the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
5-0, Joe.
Thank you.
Item F.
Mr. Chair?
Someone?
I move that we approve special permit application for an event for Patrick Lentil the second, or second?
Second summer cycle.
Second Summer Cycle, Inc., to be held September 14, 2025, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM, for a cycling event that will ride through the town of Harwich as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Do we know, does this close roads down or just limits access?
Yeah, I see that. The only thing I can say, Pete, and I'll go to Town Administrator, is police, fire, they've all signed off. I don't have an answer for you.
And I see that, you know, I think there's six police detail and 14 marshals or something to that effect. Historically, I've always objected to closing roads down. You know, I somewhat like the information. I don't imagine this is time sensitive since the event September 14th.
So Pete, just to your point, route location se attached, our route will not interfere with the Cranberry Fest. So I'm wondering if that means that there will be no, or they just don't intersect with?
Yeah.
How, right?
I just, I would like some more info on it.
Okay. We can table this. Bring it back.
Perhaps the applicant can come before us.
Perfect. I'll withdraw my motion.
Yep. Motion in second withdrawn. Would you have someone in admin just reach out to the applicant and provide a little more detail on road closures or?
Yep. Is it the board's intent to table? Because you could take that vote.
I would suggest we just put off taking action.
Yeah, we'll put off.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item G.
Motion to approve the following new 2025 seasonal common vodol license, Schoolhouse Ice Cream and Yogurt, 749 Route 28.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Don. Joe?
No, we're talking about something else. Keep calling it. I have that other document back.
They've got an active application in to not even have that location. I'm just curious.
I'm just asking for the form I sent before inadvertently.
Where we're at with this.
Okay. One thing at a time. Sorry. Don, no, 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 Don. I want to hear what you have to say.
I was wrong.
Okay.
I'm saying it now.
So we, do, do we have a motion in the second?
Yes.
All right. Moved in seconded. Any more discussion? Accurate or inaccurate? All in favor? Aye. Five zero, Joe. Now.
Thank you. Can I have that other form back, please?
Damn it. Send the form down.
Second Summer Cycle, that one?
Correct. That's the one you've held on. The one you just adopted.
Thank you very much.
Like a Swiss clock.
Yep. Broken.
Right twice a day.
All right. Moving on to old business. Item A, discussion on Route 6228 Historic Preservation Restriction Agreement. So at this point, I will open by saying that the board several weeks ago in executive session took an action, but the action required counsel, and that's why we did not speak to the action that we had taken at that time. But at this point now, counsel has gotten back to us and the action has been taken. And Select Board Member Kavanaugh has done an incredible amount of work on this, so I'm going to turn it over to Julie for the explanation and where things sit.
So this is just simply to let the public be aware that we have this restriction, that we have asked counsel to now share with Davenport to have them review, and we would prefer to have them review it sooner rather than later, so it now sits with Davenport for review.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, since I was the one who actually reconsidered and changed his mind, we do have, especially as this thing progressed, we do have the prospect of having a hole in the ground with no real idea of what to do. We have contract provisions that call for, at the end of this, historic restriction on the exterior of the building. I see, and I fully support this action, I see no value to giving that to Mr. Davenport after he's demolished the building because we have to have a mutually agreed upon restriction. And I think it's in everyone's best interests to have important company know what that restriction is going to look like upfront, so there's no confusion about where we're going to end with this. This merely is what we would have said in the end, but there's nothing to protect in the end. It's really important that we put something out right now so that everybody knows where this could land if it doesn't happen, because we don't have to consummate the purchase and sale agreement if we can't come up with an agreement on this.
Thank you, Don. Duncan, hold. Just let me see. Any other board members before we let Mr. Duncan?
So can Duncan Berry-West Harwich, can you clarify what the nature of the restriction is that's been requested?
The entire exterior of the building.
So it has, it cannot be impacted. Is that, my reading is that it's like, that it's sacred, it can't be moved, it can't be demolished, whatever?
Preserved.
Preserved. So bravo. Thank you. I think that's a definite step in the right direction. If somebody said, well, I'd like to preserve this fantastic church that speaks to 400 years of continuity in the town of Harwich, but I'm going to need to put in an ice rink, which would require us to demolish the building, which would mean it's like, that was, those are two contradictory things. I think we are at a point where we have contradictory use versus the purpose of the language of the overlay district. And I would be very much interested in following how this gets continued with their attorneys and their process. The primary concern is that they reveal themselves to be incapable of following through with the language that I read on the material tonight in the packet and the agreement. Their architect is not capable of rendering what has been done. It's my understanding that because the building has been requested and, excuse me, proposed for inclusion on the National Register, it therefore falls under the canopy of the Department of Interior Preservation Guidelines as mentioned, and I will go molding by molding to just, to make sure that that is preserved and intact. I don't think that, I think that kind of revealed that they're not capable of doing that. So they're going to raise the price on themselves unless it's not, would not be a very good thing for them or for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Duncan. Anyone else on the board?
Are we getting a skating rink? Kidding.
In cooperation with Ryan's Amusements.
Anybody else on the public?
John Carey-West Harwich, do you guys have to vote to move that preservation restriction forward, or has that already been voted by U5? Okay.
It's been voted.
Okay.
Don, you might want to stay.
The only thing that was up for debate was the timing of releasing that, and again, it served no purpose in voting it and saying that's what we're going to ask for in the end, because we can't consummate the actual purchase and sale and transfer the title without this agreement being mutually agreed upon. So it's better that both parties know upfront what's going to happen and what we're going to insist upon.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Means a lot.
Anyone else on the public? Okay, moving on. Old Business, item B, discussion on contracted wastewater management consultant. Update and next steps votes may be taken. So I took the liberty of putting this on the agenda for no other reason than if there's anything that the board would like to discuss that our wastewater management consultant could do for us in the future, it's on the agenda for us to speak about. I'm going to have it on the agenda every week, and if we bypass it and move on, then we bypass it and move on. But if there is something that a board member would like to bring up, it's going to be here for us to do that. So is there anything that the board would like to bring up? Excellent. Item C, discussion on annual town meeting warrant and all articles therein, including, but not limited to. And we'll start with Article Nine, Monomoy Middle School Siding Project, presentation from Monomoy Superintendent, Business Manager, and Harwich Co-Chair of the Monomoy Middle School Siding Project Building Committee. Gentlemen.
Hello. Hello, I'm.
Good evening.
You got the set? I'm a standard. Hi, I'm Ed McManus. I'm a co-chair of the Monomoy Regional School District Middle School Building Committee, and here with me is Pete Gabrie, Craig Gabrie, one of our members, Mark Heller, and our Superintendent Scott Carpenter. We have a presentation which we'll go through fairly quickly, so.
So I want to advance this slide, sir.
Huh? Okay, advance. Anyway, we're embarking on a critically needed restoration of the exterior envelope of the Monomoy Regional Middle School. It's going to be in two phases. The first phase will include redoing the siding and windows, and the second phase, which will take up, which will be presented next year, will be replacement of the school's roof. Advance. We have some slides of the current conditions. You know, it's, from a distance, it looks like an, you know, your nice weathered, shingled Cape Cod building, but if you look a bit closer, we have significant issues happening on the exterior, both the siding and the trim around the windows. Advance. This is some of the work that, some of the deterioration that's had with the pine trim that was put on some, how long ago? Twenty-eight years?
Ninety-seven, so.
Yeah, twenty-eight years ago, has started to give way significantly. The locations are at the base of the windows. If we go to the next slide. Let's see, I can't really, oh, this is, to keep water from intruding in some of those areas, they've been using a spray foam insulation to keep rainwater out. Problem with that, it's really not a aesthetic or a permanent solution, and we find that the birds like to dig it out to use, to making their bird nests wherever those are being made. So if we move on. One of the things that's been a problem is the water tables at the bottom. The siding's been sort of put in with unbanded with trim boards and with a water table above it. It was nice red cedar when it was put on, and it's giving way pretty consistently all around the building. It's finally gotten beyond its useful life. It's also interesting that in a number of areas, it's inconsistent because they, in other areas, they use a water Z flashing instead of a water table, and in those areas, the pine trim below seems to be holding up somewhat better, but not in all cases. If we move along. The problem, as I said, indicates it's having its most impact at the base of the windows. We can have continual problems with the sheet rock around the windows and the window sill getting damp and having to be refinished. And if we move on to the next one, this is a shot from the outside. I can't really, Scott, can you comment on this one?
So this is the plywood sheathing. So in 15, in 15-foot intervals all the way around the perimeter of the school, they removed the shingles to expose the plywood to see what's the condition of the plywood, you know, just to get a feel for, you know, how much, you know, how much of the plywood sheathing should be carried in the project, you know, for replacement. So there are spots where, you know, where the plywood's completely punky, that you wouldn't be able to nail back into it, you know, you'd have to have it re-sheathed in those areas, and there are some spots that the plywood is still dry.
Yeah. And, and in those cases where the plywood is still in good shape, it'll be left in place, but a lot of, not, not so in a lot of cases around, around the windows. We move to the next slide. This one is a shot where we removed some wallboard around one of the windows, and this is sort of, the window is here, and we're viewing it from this side, and you can see from the interior, the plywood sheathing is giving way, and there's some mold growth, not, not of a scary type of mold, the black mold. It's more of a dry rot type that is, eats, eats, eats away at the wood, but doesn't, doesn't have the aspect of causing significant air quality problems. But, and, but it hasn't, even in those areas, when we did it, the interior of the, of the drywall hadn't been significantly affected. But in the, those areas, because of what needs to be repaired, there'll have to be some drywall removal and patching on the inside around some of those window areas. But we don't expect it to necessitate a mold remediation project of any significant amount. If we move along. For the most part, we found the interior drywall and insulation have been, remained unaffected, and so the, I think, this is probably at the last moment to do the, the outside repairs to keep us from having to be pushed into having to do extensive repairs on the interior of the building. Can we move on again? You know, as we know, you have wet conditions that you leave unchecked, you'll, you'll just increase the amount of mold growth, and eventually that will get to the point of damaging the interior surfaces, so it becomes a significant health and air quality issue for the teachers and students and administrative staff that work in the building. Move along. So we're going to be, we're looking to, not, the Building Committee has looked at replacing the cedar shingles, not with cedar, but with a, there's a number of products that we've been looking at, and we've set up sample boards, both at Harwich Elementary School and Chatham, Middle, Middle School in Chatham. I think for the most part, there's, we've been taking a poll of what people preserve, and there's sort of three options that are alive, and surprisingly, the votes are sort of divvying up into thirds with no clear winner, so. But that'll be interesting. It's interesting, one of, one of the options that we had been considering, we found out that they, they have not been able to successfully make it through the testing for the class of building, school building that we have, and so that's sort of been thrown out significantly. It was probably the most expensive of the, of the four different options that we were looking at, of different types of siding material. So that's been eliminated. The, the, I think, we're probably looking at making the decision between one or the other of the shingle look-alike materials rather than doing plank siding, although there is some interest to looking at some possible designs with maybe on the lower band having plank siding and then shingle above that just to. plank siding and then shingle above that, just to provide a little bit of interest in it. But those two options, options like that, don't come at a significant increase in cost over just doing, say, doing a shingle, a hardy shingle siding job. And then the other thing that's come up, and Scott and Michael are putting together the application for, is an application for, it's a green schools grant. And we're applying for a grant to pay for the cost of the window installation, the cost of the windows and 15% of the soft cost. That is the best advice we have on where the soft spot for us to put in the application is. And that, if we get the entire grant, although they have in the past sort of split it up and given you a portion, if we do get the entire grant, we're looking at about 20, 2,100,000 in offsetting the cost of the windows project. And that's sort of the end of the, that's the last slide?
There's eight more slides.
There's a couple more?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we go through, oh, these are more pictures?
These are sure.
Yeah. Now, this is sort of the architects doing renditions. This is a polymer clapboard in a dark gray tone. Next, this is a fiber cement shingle in a lighter gray tone. And we also, in our questionnaire, we asked them to decide, to give us their opinion of which material clapboard or shingles. And there's a couple variations of each, and also on colors. And it's pretty much dividing in thirds on every option we give them to vote on. So, anyway, next item. And these, these were the panels that we put up. And they all have a poster with a QR code that people can go and fill out the questionnaire right there with their phones. And again, so the project will include the replacement of the school's siding, flashing, and windows. And obviously, the reason why is that most of the siding certainly has passed its useful lifespan. And as we're finding out, a lot of the trim work around the windows, and obviously, a lot of the flashing underneath all of that has gotten to its, passed its useful lifespan. We'd be beginning it, if we get approval, we begin construction actually early in 2026. And we anticipate, although we still have to make sure that the scheduling will work around, being able to free up classrooms, et cetera, but to do this while both school is in session over the summer, and then if it takes longer, you know, when school is in session the following fall. And then the costs, is, the construction cost is at 8.5 million. Can you read this? I can't. I lost my glasses. I can't see.
So for the roof, it's an $8.5 million estimated project. So we literally just were assigned a, an owner's project manager and a designer by the state. So to be part of the accelerated repairs program, you're assigned the OPM, and you're assigned a architect. The state will pick up 37.32% of the cost for that project. So we still don't know, we haven't gotten that feasibility study done yet. I mean, literally, we just had our first organizational meeting on the 15th of this month. So, you know, so when that feasibility study comes in, we'll, we'll see how close that estimate of 8.5 is. But, you know, architects that we've been working with for the, you know, for the siding project, you know, we're sort of estimating, given the size of the building. It's a, it's a 120-square-foot building. So it's a, it's a sizable building, what the, what the roof replacement cost would be for that, and as for that 8.5 million comes from.
And then, well, for the first project, hopefully, the state will award us a grant, so they'll pick up some of it. But if the remainder, whatever the cost turns out to be, will be paid for by the two towns under the existing formula for splitting costs. That being said, if in the future, a different agreement is struck and applied, it will apply and change the way the annual payments are put on the different towns. I mean, so it doesn't become a fixed cost going forward, but it, it can move if, with a new allocation formula, if it comes up. And we have the, the estimates on the average price, medium-price Harwich home, the cost would be 80, $58 per year in tax bill. And then for the roofing project, the cost would be $20 per year for the 25 years of the, the bond issue. So if you have any questions, I think, you know, I think people were surprised when the building committee and the architects started working together, and we came to the conclusion that it wasn't, it wasn't just a siding replacement, but it, it's going to, it requires replacing all the trim and the windows. It didn't, just didn't make sense not to do it all at this time, because shortly, the windows would start needing replacing, and the cost, three, four years from now, would be significantly higher. Plus, you'd be paying again to redo the work that you had just redone. And that just didn't make sense. I think we have the building committee that's been appointed, I think, a very good and experienced group of construction professionals. And I think we talked about this long and hard, but, and really came to this conclusion unanimously. So, you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
And thank you both for being here. I'll go to the board for questions. Who wants to start?
I'm happy to start.
Julie.
So just want to say once again, thank you to the building committee for working hard on this. I know that there were a lot of people involved, and I appreciate all the efforts, understanding that this is only going to cost us more and more money as we, if we wait to go forward. I guess one thing, a couple of questions I have, just based on the presentation, currently, you're showing 58 per year for the building repairs and 20 per year for the roof, and those are the costs to Harwich taxpayers. But that, those numbers would adjust depending on the grant numbers.
Yes.
Yeah.
It depends on the grant numbers. It'll depend on what we finally decide on to use for the siding, because there's a fair range of that. You know, you, you, you know, I know everybody would like it to be the cheapest, but, you know, you also want to have something that the community's a little bit proud of. And sometimes, the cheapest isn't always that. And then, you know, other things we're, we're looking at, we were still holding some money in the, in the budget for, is this whole issue of whether we would have to phase this over two-building season, which has startup and closed-down costs. If we can avoid that, we're going to do that. You know, so there's a variety of ways that, going forward, I think we'll be able to bring the total price tag down. And I think, like I said, with the group of folks we have looking at this project, they all have a wide variety of experience, and will give their advice on ways the architect and project manager can work to help us do that.
And the only other follow-up then would be two things, is so, so in terms of the 11 and a half million estimated cost, anything you hope would come down from that, that that is still the max number you believe?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. So, so we would borrow, ultimately, we would borrow at the end of both phases, the siding phase and the, and the roof phase. And ideally, you know, ideally, you know, if we get this great school grant, that's going to take, you know, money off. So, you know, so the amount that we need to borrow, hopefully, knock on wood, is a lot less than what the project was, you know, like, even when we were building the high school on Oak Street, you know, the, you know, the project was approved, you know, the approval was much higher than what ultimately, you know, what that building project ultimately came in, you know, came in at.
Yeah.
And when do you hope to make the decision on the materials? Is there a timeframe?
Well, until we get the approval of the project, we've sort of slowed up the architects on doing their design work. But it should be fairly quick. Towards the beginning of summer, we'll get some reading on which choice it's going to be, and some of the other issues that we're still looking at. You know, I think, from what I gather, about the utilization of classrooms in the middle school, there are significant spaces to be able to move classes around, so we can be working on a part of the building and not interrupt their educational work. So, so we'll, we'll be looking to go to, put out to bid towards the beginning of August, if I remember.
Yeah, so we would, you know, so the architects are poised to, you know, to, you know, with approval from the towns, we would go, we would go out, you know, out to bid for the project, and then, you know, have a lead, you know, the windows are going to take some time to come in. So those windows would come in over the course of the winter.
Right.
And, you know, we'd come out of the winter sort of ready to, ready to roll. And we would just, you know, we would go through a process where we'd work with, we'd work with the, you know, the contractor to sort of close down, you know, sort of like six contiguous spaces, you know, across the building. And, you know, like, you know, keep moving across, and, you know, so it will, it'll involve working with the staff and students where, you know, classes might be in the library, or classes might be here or there, you know, while we sort of move around to the next spaces.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not wishing to add any more to the heat between the two towns' discussion, we're about to have some light discussion here. First of all, please tell me there's going to be flashing associated with those windows, because I know you and I had this discussion before, but my house was built eight years before that to the same codes in this area. It was insane not to have flashing around those windows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah. So this, you know, the, one of the, one of the main reasons we've even talked about is, like, to properly flash a window, you know, you want to remove that window, you want that flashing to be integrated into the building wrap that goes around, so that essentially, you've got a very water impermeable building and windproof. You know, so there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of benefits that are going to come out of this when it comes to energy savings in the long haul, too.
Not to get ahead of ourselves here, behind the tyvek, there's sheathing.
Yeah.
And you can't stand here and tell me that you know exactly the extent of the water migration because the siding's on it.
No.
Okay, I just want to get that out there, because there's no way to know that right now.
Well, and because of that, in, in the current estimate, we're carrying the cost for 100% replacement of siding. And.
Sheathing, yeah.
Sheathing, I mean.
Sheathing, tyvek.
We don't, we don't think we'll need to replace 100%, but we're carrying that contingency.
But there's no way of knowing short of punching a hole in every other foot.
Okay, and the third, the third part of this, I just want to get it out there, because you, you said something that I will take issue with.
Yeah.
Especially having allergies since I've been four years old.
Yeah.
There is no such thing as, there's just one kind of bad mold, and everything else is fine, benign. It depends on what you test as being allergic to.
Yeah.
So I am not entirely certain, because you're trying to test for a moving target. I'm not entirely certain that the kids who were in that school over this past 25, 30 years were all psychologically experiencing symptoms. I'm pretty sure that the, whatever fungus or mold it was, it may not have been black mold.
Yeah.
But people are allergic to different kinds of mold, just like they're allergic to different kinds of grass and whatever. So be mindful of the fact you're still playing around with kids' health.
Right. And we have been, you know, all, this last half of this year, we've been, every, you know, every few weeks, going through a quarter of the building and testing the spaces. You know, what we, what we find is, we'll occasionally have a room that pings high, and then go look at what, like, what's the reason, you know, for, you know, like, we had a situation where there were some wet books in the library. But what we're seeing is, more often than not, we're seeing the mold levels outside of the building are actually higher than what we're seeing inside the building, which, which does make some sense. Like, the air filtration that happens through the HVAC system in that building would pull particles, you know, tiny particles out, out of the air. But, but I think the pictures that, you know, the picture that Ed showed of, you know, when they cored through the drywall, and you can see the backside of wet sheathing, and wet sheathing is starting to grow mold. This, it kind of speaks to the urgency of the project. It doesn't take much longer for that wetness to get into the insulation and into the drywall. And then 11.5 billion-dollar project is a much more expensive project for both towns.
And you'll forgive me for saying this, but your testing is almost irrelevant to me, because it would be like you're trying to do that with a blindfold on. I just recently had a retest on just one panel's worth of allergens. And once they showed me what's potentially capable of being tested for, it's humongous. If you could have found the specific allergen, God bless you. But the fact that you can see visual mold, I guarantee you, there's something going on in the air. Whether it's something you found or something you didn't find is another story. But if you can find wet sheathing, and it's got fungus and mold on it, there's something going on. I'm just leaving it at that.
Yeah. Thank you, Don. Mike?
I have nothing.
Pete?
A couple of comments and some questions. First comment, I suggest if you add the cost of either per, whether it's square foot or linear foot to each of those panels, you'll find a lead dog real quickly. So people assume that cost is even, regardless which one they choose. I think the cost associated would create that lead dog. As far as the project itself, when is the expected decision on the green schools grant?
I think it comes in June.
June?
Yeah, so it's due in two days. And it's a fairly fast turnaround, but it's not before town meeting, clearly.
Sure, sure. But again, assuming you get anywhere from zero, one to $2 million, I mean, $1 to $2 million, that will come off of your borrowings.
Correct.
Exactly.
And Julie asked about the 11.5 being fairly firm. How much is the total contingency built into that 11.5?
I'd have, I'd have to go pull numbers. It's substantial.
Yeah. Right now, the construction contingency is, I think, at 15%. And there is a inflationary material inflation contingency of 3.75%. And am I missing anything, Craig? No. Those are the two contingencies we're carrying right now in that, you know.
A few million dollars anyway.
Yeah, yeah, you know. And, and it's basically because of the uncertainty of a lot of the issues that we're dealing with. And, but that, we expect that contingency to come down as we get further into design and reserve some of the issues that are still outstanding. And either that will, that money will be eliminated from the estimate, or it will be moved from a contingency into one of the trades as we determine. or it will be moved from a contingency into one of the trades as we determine that, you know, it's going to be a little bit more expensive for the metalwork or a little bit less expensive for the painting, you know.
Does this project, again, based on the dollar value, trigger the ADA compliance requirements throughout the building?
So, yeah, so it, it will trip it at some point, either, and the question is whether, whether the siding project, I, I, it's, it's quite possible that the siding project won't, but the roof project will, which all the, all the better if it's, if it's in there because the state would be covering 37.32% of that, of those costs. There, there isn't, you know, when we look at the building though, there's, there's not, I think, huge amounts of ADA changes that would need to happen to the building. Like, it, it was done with ADA compliance in mind in the late, in the late 90s. And, you know, so it's, we're not at a place where we don't have curb cuts and we, you know, we don't have, you know, doors that have automatic openings, you know, to come in and out of the building. So, you know, so I think the, the ADA upgrades that might be needed are going to be on the small side.
Assuming we don't know the cost of that, what's the plan to fund those requirements?
It would, it would just be picked up with the project in the, in the contingency.
And that's where some of the, what's being held in the design contingency, it may, those issues come up. Some of that design contingency will go into paying for any ADA responsibilities that we find. But, you know, a lot of the, you know, for the most part, the ramping and the bathrooms, the, the real expensive projects to bring something up are, are meet standards. It's a lot of the minor things, lever handles on doors, you know, a variety of those sort of accessibility issues, exit signing. I'm not sure all areas of the building have both light and sound fire alarms for each room. And, and those are sorts of things that, in upgrading buildings that from that age are being caught with.
So, and so I assume the doors being replaced in this project are already ADA compliant?
Yeah, well, actually, we're not replacing any doors.
Right, it's just windows?
Just windows.
So, so that would be a cost, an expensive cost if you have to replace doors?
Yeah.
Throughout that building?
Yeah.
ADA compliant?
But the doors, as far as we understand, are ADA compliant and they do have the opening...
They do?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you said they did.
Yeah, they do.
You said they did.
Yeah, yeah.
My, my misunderstanding, thank you.
We also, we've also, it's the way that, the way that ADA threshold trips is based on the building's assessed value.
Right.
I went back to the town of Chatham and, because we looked at the assessed value of the building and it hadn't been reassessed for eons, you know, so, you know, so we had the building reassessed so that it's at a more appropriate level. So I, I do anticipate if you take both projects combined, you know, siding, windows, and then the roof, it'll trip likely when we're in the roof project.
Okay, so, you don't know what it was reassessed to be already, or?
Uh, it's in the, like, mid twenties.
And I assume as this project goes along, we can get periodic, periodic updates from whether it's school administration or the project committee to let us know kind of what direction it's heading?
Yeah.
You know, where costs are looking, you know, trending, I should say, so...
Yeah, certainly. You know, Scott asked me to, if I wanted to be on another building committee, and I said, oh, sure, that sounds like fun. In, when I was chair of the high school building committee, we did a lot of presentations through the courses of construction with the school committee because they were the ones that appointed the committee. And I hadn't really, it wasn't until the whole issue of the financial arrangements between the two towns came up that it, I felt I, I found out I should be responding and presenting to you guys too. So, you know, our charge is to advise the school committee because they're, they're the ones that will eventually sign the contracts and grant the, the award, so. But more than happy to come, as you, some of you may remember, every two weeks we were out filming the construction of this, the high school with Jamie and I tromping around. And we'll probably see if we can set something up to do some film on this also.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Pete, and I just have a few. This team of mine here has done a phenomenal job asking a lot of great questions. So obviously, the outside needs work. Through my visit, it was, it was obvious to me. But there's, there's also who's on the inside, and that's our teachers and our kids, right? And, and that's a huge driver, I think, for me and, and for the board as well, to, to make sure that this is remedied. Are there any provisions made for any interior work? As, when I walked through with you, Scott, there was trim moldings and some carpet that had problems and some flooring. And I, I would just hate to see going through all the work on the outside and not...
So I think when the, the built into that window cost is the replacement of not just what's on the outside of the window, but, you know, but if you're putting in a new window, you're going to have, you know, new interior cells and whatever, you know, whatever shade that you have for your window, it's going to be a shade that, that's built for that new window.
Carpets, flooring?
So the carpets and flooring aren't part of, aren't part of this. I think the, the carpets and flooring we've been putting in and doing as part of the capital, ongoing capital project year to year.
Great, and does the HVAC system annually get cleaned out?
The HVAC system annually gets cleaned out. Yeah, so, so we, we, that building doesn't operate on a building-wide HVAC system.
It had many splits and...
Yeah, so, so it's, it's, it's room by room, so, you know, so each room has a univent. So those univents are, they have the filters removed and they're vacuumed out each year. And, so you have new filters a couple of times as a year. So that, that's, that maintenance, you know, happens all the time.
That's ongoing maintenance.
Yeah.
So any other interior work that...
Nothing, nothing that we know of now.
Not, not in this scope, is what I'm saying.
Not in this scope, you know.
So, so that's all from me. I don't have any more questions, I think, Julie?
Well, so I guess I'd ask this board, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the indefinite postponement that we previously voted to reconsider the funding, the middle school siding project.
Reconsider, yeah, yeah, sure, second.
Motion and a second to reconsider the vote of indefinite postponement. Any discussion? Don?
Because you cannot know what you do not know. You just, we're going, it's fascinating to me that you go 30 years and everything old is new again. But I beg of you, if you do have to do something, don't make it carpet. It's possibly the worst choice you could make in terms of health?
I, I...
Or in terms of longevity.
I don't, I don't disagree. We've, you know, we've been pulling out and, and at the middle school, you know, each summer we have been going in, because the rooms were carpeted throughout. And we have been going in and doing swaths of rooms with, you know, with flooring that, you know, that's going back to the tile flooring, you know, of days going on.
Looks cool to have a carpet, but it's not as healthy.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
It's just our reconsideration.
Yes, motion to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, Joe? Someone want to make a motion?
I moved that we support the article.
Second.
Moved and seconded to support the article. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Pete?
Could, is it possible, and I don't know which group, but could we get a breakdown of the 11 million, 11.5 million? So as you alluded to, you had some pieces in contingency and whatnot, could we get that total breakdown?
I can email you that tomorrow.
Great.
And the only thing I'll add is I would love you to check with your, whoever is awarded the bid. Even the contractor we use has a software that gives you progress and, and money spent and what's left and overages. And so I, instead of just monthly updates, I would love access to the project online. So this board can, if, if it's possible, if the contractor has that kind of software for, for his, his projects, we'd love to be able to see that in real time. Not just having somebody come in and, and say, well, you know, we're, we're doing this and we hung up a couple of shingles. Like, let's get, this is a big project, lot of money. I'd love to see the, the, the software being utilized. So for me, that, that's what I would ask for.
And just so you, step back here, and just so you, the process with the building committee is every month the contractor submits his sheets for payment. It's reviewed by our project manager and then reviewed and voted on by the building committee. If there's any change orders that come up on something, those are reviewed and, and also voted on by the, the building committee. So it's a, it's a, they're under, contractors under a fair degree of scrutiny.
That's great. I, I don't want to get into that level.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I think we should be able to at any point in time log in and see where our project is.
Sure, yeah.
So it, it's been a huge, huge help for us with, with some of the development stuff that we're doing. And it, it makes a big difference to be able to just in real time see where you stand. So, any other discussion?
And if I...
Sure.
Just one last thing, you know, this whole issue of, you know, paying the, the end dollar amount is, when we did the, the high school project, as we needed funds, we, the, the school district treasurer issued tax anticipation notes or revenue anticipation notes, and we kept on funding those. The interest rates at the time were lower than what the, what, what the bonding revenue was. And then at a, at a certain time after we had spent a fair amount and there, there, there was at one point where there was dip in the bond market and we took advantage and, and put in some permanent financing. But in this case, because we have two projects back to back, we'll probably roll this over with revenue anticipation notes until we come up to the final cost and, and then issue, put it, go out at a single bond for both projects to pay it off.
Thank you. Joe, did you have something?
Just that I heard the motion was to support, does that equate to accept and adopt?
That would be acceptable, yeah.
Accept and adopt, yeah.
That's what I heard.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Just one, one quick last thing. We had a public forum about this where I gave the presentation last week, last Tuesday at the Harwich Community Center. I'll be doing an encore performance on, tomorrow night at, at 5:00 PM at the Chatham Community Center. Anyone's, you know, welcome to attend. There was one question that, that came up at the forum that was, it was interesting, and it was a...
It's a good lead in, by the way.
Yeah, it was, it was a member, a community member from Harwich asking about why not just move back into the Sisson Road property? And, yeah, and I, I, I think it's, I think it's one of those lingering questions out there. And what I shared with the, with the woman who asked the question is that, you know, I, I think even if we were in the Sisson Road property, we'd still be, you know, the old, you know, the cultural center, we'd still, we'd still be at that place if we were still operating as a school where we'd be talking roof and windows and boilers and, and things like that. It's that, you know, the buildings need, you know, need updating. And then I also shared that an advantage with the building that we have in Chatham is that it's 50% larger. There's more classrooms, there's bigger, you know, there are bigger classrooms, there's better fields, there's two gyms, there's, you know, there's just, there's just a lot more space to, you know, to kind of develop a, you know, an academic program and an extracurricular program. And that's, that's one of the advantages if we take care of the building now.
Thank you.
And from an academic point of view, the, because it was a high school, the STEM, science, technology, way that the building's equipped is much, much, much more advanced than Sisson Road was or, or could possibly be.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, the quicker answer is you don't own it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Plus, on that note...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything's negotiable.
Except that one is the answer.
Everything's negotiable.
Stranger things.
Okay, moving on.
Mr. Chair?
Please. This, neither one of these agenda items are for public.
Okay.
This is all for, this is all for the board.
You told them to wait, yeah.
What's that?
You asked them to wait.
Oh, you know what, I did tell you. Thank you. Charles, please. Thank you. I didn't recognize you the second time.
Charles Criscott, T-Berry Ave in Harwich. I could wait and, and hold my comments for town meeting next morning.
No, no, please.
First of all, I, I, on this topic, I, first of all, I had attended several of the building committee meetings. And my background as a school principal for 24 years, I, I was involved in construction of two new schools and a complete renovation of a third school. And evolved with building committees, this was an outstanding building committee. I just wanted to share that observation from attending it. And congratulations to the superintendent for the committee that he put together and gratitude to the people in the community, particularly the people in the building trades that left, lent their expertise. I, I think we as a community can trust and have confidence in their recommendations based on my experience with previous building committees. A lot of the, let me start, I just wanted to say that I believe that the building work needs to be done. Building restoration work needs to be done on the middle school. We've been looking all along and, and at the pros of doing the building project. But there are some high risks at doing the building project at the current time under the existing funding formula, risks to students, and that's what I wanted to comment about. I know that the select board has an appreciation for a lot of this. So a lot of this is for public because in the public and, and committee, building committee meetings and in the public, hasn't been a lot of discussion about are there any cons or are there any risks that are involved in proceeding at, at this time? I, I'm concerned that, I, I only want to speak because I've been involved in both ends, the pros and the risks through my career, involved in a decision like this. I did administer a building that, believe it or not, my honest perspective was is in worse condition than the middle school building. Much worse condition. I also was the last principal of a building that was 100 years old, that a ceiling all year I thought was going to collapse on the cafeteria of students who ate underneath that building. And we didn't have the kind of maintenance personnel that you have in the Montemoy district that would jump right onto that and, and pay attention to it. So I'd been involved in that aspect, that's why I say this building project needs to be done. But to be honest with you, this, this project, I would have, I would take this building over the building that I administered any day for the good of the students and what was happening. And that building I was in, we actually had removed in the middle school wing, all of the ceiling tile. We were leaking so bad, we removed all the suspended ceiling tiles. An entire middle school wing and all the adjoining classrooms, one of which was an industrial arts classroom with a lot of expensive equipment, and other was home economics classroom. And we would put up tarps so that we could channel the water into 60 gallon buckets to collect anytime we had a rain like we had this past Saturday night. That's a, you'd count on just custodial staff coming in next morning, moving 60 gallon buckets of water that had been channeled. So, so I see that the building needs to be done. I'm not convinced that it's unusable for, for another year or so to buy some time. I think this is one of the first, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the first really major capital projects since regionalization. You know, there was the high school that was built, but we've had buildings in relatively good condition because of their age up to now, and now we're getting to the point where we have some aging buildings. This project is the first of many, and your board saw that report at one of the March meetings where Mr. McMillan, the business manager, presented to you the outlook for... where Mr. McMillan, the business manager, presented to you the outlook for major capital projects involving the school district budget. And it was multimillion dollars that we're talking about there. What most people don't understand, this board, I know understands it, but what most people don't understand is that debt is just non-discretionary. It's as you add debt into your budget, into your school budget, you have to pay that debt. You can never make a decision to say we're postponing it for a year, we're only going to make partial payments because we've got to keep class sizes, or we've got to protect other programs that are critical to students. And so I think that's really important for people to understand as we move forward with with this project. And we're moving forward with this project in a way that's going to, right now, if nothing changes, be picked up at least 77% by the town of Harwich, which has 45% of the property valuation and 67% of the total population of a school program that's an asset to the entire community. Of a school program that has 231 current students from other districts attending a school choice because their families consider this to be a top flight district. Now, we've already started a couple of weeks ago, cutting the school budget. We removed $400,000 from the school budget, flew under the radar for most people because it didn't cut any staff, didn't cut any personnel, didn't raise class sizes. But it made some from point of view of a veteran educator, it made some substantial cuts that are going to have an impact on students. And as was presented at the meeting, every one of those cuts that were made to make that reduction were cuts that were identified as needs and they were cut because they were the only items that didn't involve staff reductions. Not because they weren't needed, but because there was a need to cut. And I saw the discussions that the board has had about local receipts and making ends meet on, you know, balancing the budget and balancing the town department. I don't understand all of that. I also understand very clearly that putting off a project like this involves increasing costs. But I'm wondering if putting off a project like this for a short period of time and providing an opportunity to try to go back and look at a more affordable way to and I allowed the board for the efforts you've put to initiate with the town of Chatham, discussion in this regard. I do believe that the school committee should get itself involved because I can see where this is heading. We've cut things that are flying under the radar now. But what I want to share with you, the other side of the equation that I've experienced in my career, I started to list during my career, items that I witnessed cut from my school program in my regional school district and that many of them I had a direct hand in. So the list was elementary art and music, elementary and middle school libraries, middle school athletics. These are real cuts that were made. Home economics, industrial arts, elementary and middle school instrumental music, middle school athletics, and class sizes in my regional district, the 25 is considered a small class right now. So I've lived through that. I've experienced that. I've seen what that's done for what that provides for the kids in the school district. I probably wouldn't even be speaking about it if it wasn't, we didn't have a school district that had a phenomenal budget that has attracted 231 students from other districts around the Cape to want to come to school and their families come to school here here at Montemoye. So one a big, the big risk is that will there ever be a reason for the two towns to come together and try and see that there is a problem? And how long is that going to take? And what I foresee happening is this middle school project, I didn't get a sense from the first meeting that was held that there was an understanding of the problem by the by Chatham. I believe that there's a there is a great fiscal difference between the two towns. Town administrator has alluded to the percentage of the town budget in one town that's taken up by education versus the other town. Harwich is pushing against a levy limit. I've heard comments made about I wasn't here in 2005. I heard a comment at a board meeting about an override vote in 2005. Sounds like it wasn't a happy or pleasant experience and something that people want to repeat again who live through that. Many people haven't. So my career taught me weighing the two, being a part of both components, the building and what goes on in the building. I always go with what goes on inside the building is more important than the building. And what goes on inside of the building is driven by the instructional budget of the school budget, and that is the only discretionary part of the school budget there is. You've got to pay the other components. I don't believe that every other component is particular is got a direct relationship to student enrollment. There was an interesting letter to the editor in the Chronicle, you may have seen, written and submitted by a person who was on the original regionalization committee, who proposed what I considered was a very fair way to go about funding the middle school project. And it was it was fair. And it also had Chatham paying 69% of the bill on that in a with a very fair rationale from the way from the way I read. There isn't just one fair way. And so at the same time, if this project goes through, I fear that there will be some motivation lost for people to really consider the problem. And what's going to happen is this time next year, you're going to be cutting some significant things from the school budget. We've already cut this year, significant things are being cut. It's going to really be the kind of things that people have to pay attention to. And now people are going to wake up and they're going to say, ah, but we can't change the regional agreement. That's a year, that's a two-year process. So I just wanted to speak up on behalf of the students whose education is at risk here. Yes, it's great to improve their building. I administer worse buildings. I'd take this building over those those buildings I referred to any day. But 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 somebody needs to speak up to say that there is a risk here about the educational structural component, which is the heart of what makes this the district. So thank you for doing-
Appreciate your time, and I'm sorry I misspoke. And-
Thank you.
We did ask for the presentation and for people to be able to comment. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the Article 20 Great Sand Lakes wastewater construction with input from GHD. Gentlemen, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Jeff Reg from GHD.
Mark Dringle from GHD.
Thank you both. I think one of the primary reasons we have you here is to just get a better handle on and an update, rather, of the cost of the project as you both see it, where it sits today. So I wonder if we could start there.
Okay. I had forwarded over to the town administrator table, I believe it was included in your packet.
Mm-hmm.
And what I did is took the update that we gave in March with the breakdown of costs and then put that beside kind of where we are right now in April. And then I wanted to explain what some of the differences were and then some of the changes that we will need to make moving forward as we're going through our current design contract.
Excellent.
So the biggest change from the March 7th to the April 23rd was we eliminated the what we were calling the bid alternate areas. There were areas that were outside of the original service area. And we did that for two reasons. One, we had a design meeting about a week, week and a half ago where we discussed some issues with regards to the design and the concern we had with the depth in Queen Anne Road, the three gas mains, the proximity of other utilities, depth of groundwater, and we made and and just the depth of the sewer in a stretch of that. And we said for constructability and cost, we recommended changing, let's call it, the western, the western end of the collection system to low pressure. And by doing that, we had looked at other areas that were adjacent to the collection system. If we were going to be doing gravity, because we'd want to design those and make sure that they could be added. And that's why we had sort of potential at all bid alternate areas. So by changing that to all low pressure, we said there was no real purpose to carry those other areas that were outside of the service area because it'd really just be an extension of low pressure. And we figured that at this point, we it wasn't necessary to design those. So so half of the cost reduction in the sewer pumping station construction is related to that. What we haven't done is we haven't actually changed the design yet. So we haven't rerun the cost estimate, which will be from a capital perspective, will be less by changing over from gravity to low pressure in that area and shallowing the sewers because now we're we're still going to be in groundwater, we're still going to be deep, but we can shallow some of that up to help with some of the constructability. There are a lot of utilities, they do a lot of stuff in there. And so being very deep in groundwater, in sand, next to some very big gas mains and water is not ideal construction. So so that was that. Then in terms of the bidding climate and SRF contingencies, those are just percentages that were just related to the first number on the table. So they all come down. What we did is we carried the same, we've been carrying the same number for construction phase services, police utilities and others because we haven't, we haven't proposed anything to you at this point. We carry what we carried in the SRF. That kind of set the upper limit of where we thought we would be. So we've just carried those numbers. We carried the same additional sewer design as we talked about the last, the last meeting. We added in because we had now met with the DPW and gotten some feedback on the design drawings that we had in terms of where they wanted to look at either replacement of existing stormwater facilities or design of new stormwater facilities in the area. So we took that information and we came up with a an estimate for the design and construction of those facilities. And then we carried a modified future allowance for grinder pumps. And that value went down only because we just focused on the ones that were going to be low pressure. Like if a low pressure sewer, which is basically, you know, a non-gravity sewer, anyone that would be on that would have to have a grinder pump. So we used the number that we knew would have to be because we're still going through the design and trying to figure out which ones, which properties are on the cusp. And as the reality is, that number isn't truly needed right now in terms of appropriation because it's going to be another two years plus before the construction is done. And at the end of construction, then you'll actually know how many of the actual units you'll ultimately need. But it's kind of a placeholder for right now. So that's what we what we did. We were listed on the intended use plan for 31 million and change. And we are still, even though the number keeps coming down, and we think that we can pare down, obviously, when we redesigned that portion that was gravity to low pressure sewer, that value would come down. But we still recommend appropriating the 35 million because this current atmosphere and things is is unknown. When we go through and do our bid, when we do our estimates, what we do, what GHD's practice has been is we have a lot of experience, as you know, going through and having multiple projects bid throughout the Cape. Some, we've got bids from just, you know, phase three, we've got Chatham, we've got Mashpee, we've got a whole bunch of different projects. We look at all those items. We look at how our bid items are as we're doing our design. We carry those numbers. We inflate them based on what we project is sort of the what we call the E and R index, the engineers engineering news record index. They do a cost indexing. We kind of track that. And so we apply a factor, look at midpoint of construction to kind of come up with our number. And so that's that's where the meat of our values come in from. Trying to think if there were other things that were in the notes that. I think those are the, I think those are the big factors. I guess I'll throw it back to the board for questions.
And thank you. Who wants to start?
Pete? No, Julie.
Thanks, Pete.
Hey, Tom.
So just going back to the notation that you made about the low pressure versus the gravity system.
Correct.
And so how many houses does that impact?
So I believe, I believe our count is now somewhere in the order of 84 properties would be served by low pressure. And I believe that number is maybe three times what it was before because there was only a couple, and I apologize, I get the lake, I get all the lake streets mixed up. So there was a section that was going to all be always be low pressure. And there were a couple, I think, extensions off of some of the either the cul-de-sacs towards the ponds or some of the extremities that were going to have that. And now basically, I think it's Lakeview Terrace, is that the one that kind of takes a little L shape to the towards the pond? I apologize, I didn't bring a map with me. But basically, the properties that are to the west of that that intersection on Queen Anne are now going to be pressure sewer.
So with the 84 that's estimated and the grinder pumps that you'll need, which is included in the cost, that overall, you still, because you don't have to go as deep now, is that right? Is that where you're getting the savings?
Yeah. And so that doesn't get reflected in the cost estimate yet because we didn't, we we just made that decision. And then we were requested to kind of give a new update on this cost. And basically, the only thing I really did was have the team go back through, check the count the numbers on how many grinder pumps we thought we'd be adding and removing those areas that were we were considering as alternates, they were sort of extension areas outside of the original service area that was defined as part of the CWMP. So we eliminated those. So that brought that cost down a bit.
Okay. So there could be potentially some further-
Correct.
But I understand why you're saying stick with the 35 million. But potentially, there could be some more savings.
Yeah, we expect this number to come down.
Okay.
Because we are, you know, we were at 22-plus feet deep in some stretch for a pretty good stretch of road. And that groundwater is only going to be, you know, we would have been in 10 to maybe 15 feet of groundwater. That's a lot of groundwater to be dealing with. We're still going to be in a lot of groundwater even by shallow because we're only we're only able to still shallow things up by, you know, in the order of two to five feet. But two to five feet still makes a pretty significant difference when you're at those depths. So whatever we can do, we're trying to pull that that those elevations up.
And that helps with some additional utility impacts as well?
Well, yeah, it's it's still, we're still trying to work around the utilities. So we're still going to be deep. We're still going to be working right up against, well, we aren't, but the contractor is going to be asked to work, you know, between some very large utilities, a large water main on the north side of the road and three gas mains on the south side of the road. And one of them's, I can't remember if it's six or 12 inches. I mean, it's still, it's a, it's a, it's a good size.
It is a feeder main. It's a big one.
Yeah, it's a big one. And two little ones, I don't know why they have, I don't know. For some reason, they decided they wanted to load up on gas mains. So there's a lot of them there. So it's a, it makes it difficult. There's stormwater in the road that we're going to have to relocate. In addition to just dealing with the things where they want to make improvements, we're actually going to have to move some of the stuff that was that was already done. And then for some reason, there is a stretch that we're still trying to work out. We're going to have to relocate a water main, which isn't going to be easy either because the gas main does some kind of strange jog in the middle of the in the middle of Queen Anne that we're trying to, you know, trying to work around as well. So all those things, you know, impact, you know, the costs of the of the project. So, you know, we still, we're, we're still in design. And the intent is to- So, you know, we still, we're, we're still in design and the intent is to, you know, we got to go through and we'll check our numbers again and make sure, that's why I still want to stay, I want to try to stay conservative and keep that 35 because if there's something that we're missing as we're going through the design that we're not thinking of, that's going to come back to bite us, that we want to make sure that we have, you know, the money in there. And we don't know what the bidding climate is going to be. There are a lot of, as you know, there's a lot of construction projects, a lot of sewer projects on Cape right now, which means that the likelihood that you might get more bidders from off Cape is possible and they come at, you know, a higher cost than, than your, than your local bidders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
Nothing.
Michael?
Originally you designed this gravity.
We were trying to, yes, we were trying to maximize gravity. We weren't able to get, we knew we wouldn't be able to get all of it, but we were trying to get as much of it as we could.
And why?
Because operationally wise, the, the operators tend to like that. It has less of a back and forth with the community with regards to the concerns over grinder pump ownership, procurement, those kinds of things. There's nothing wrong with a grinder pump, low-pressure system. It's just from a, from an operational standpoint, operators tend to like the gravity sewer system much better. And then it also deals with, it eliminates some of the gray area of who to call when there's an issue with your grinder pump and things. I mean, these are all real things that people, you know, in communities struggle with.
So overall, which one's easier to maintain?
Well, I mean, I guess it's a, it's sort of a complicated question. So from an operator's perspective, if they aren't responsible for the operation and maintenance of the grinder pump, and a grinder pump system is a fairly simple system that's easy to maintain because the operators aren't asked to own or operate the pumps. I mean, in some communities, that's put on the town and some communities that remains with the homeowners. There are plenty of people that have grinder pumps. There are plenty of people that are even in this neighborhood that have a pump on their septic system because they, they have probably either a elevated or raised system because they're near the pond or things like that. You know, it's, the pumps last for a while and, you know, for a good period of time. So it's not, it's not like everyone becomes a wastewater operator. So from that perspective, they, they can be very similar, but when, you know, the more pumping stations or the more pumps and things that you have to deal with and valves that you have to operate and maintain, the more operationally intense it becomes, so.
And under the old system, how many grinder pumps on the, on the gravity? How many grinder pumps, I think you mentioned 82 on the low pressure. How many were before?
So I, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Half?
I'd say it's less than, I'd say it was maybe a third.
Third.
Yeah.
And so for the, for me at least, the notion of, of not worrying about what the cost of the grinder pumps are going to be is misleading to the general public, right? So anyone, we're, we're in the 25th hour on this.
Yep.
And pivoting the project with no education. And.
So, oh, okay. So I, so maybe I was misunderstood. The, it's not that there's not a cost or burden, I wasn't carrying that. It's that we just adjusted what we were giving for our future allowance and only focusing on the low-pressure ones, knowing that there are going to be more that would potentially need to, they would be pumping to gravity. You know, it's, it's the same situation we have in phase three, so.
And my comment wasn't really directed at what you're doing. It's more directed at what we, what we need to do to educate the public on what this is actually going to cost them.
Yep.
Right? And, and based on your comments tonight, we're still at the we-think stage on several of the items. We're still on the physical characteristics of what's underneath the Queen Anne Road. There's still a lot of unknowns. Or at least that's what I'm hearing. And, and that's why I don't support this.
So I think, I mean, we have a, we have a good handle on the utilities and what we're trying to design around. What we're, the reason we made the change now is that as we are getting more into the detailed design and looking at how constructable and things like that, that's when we made the decision that from a perspective of the town, it would probably be in your best interest. Because the other issue we were having is there were some properties where we might be installing a gravity sewer along that stretch of road of Queen Anne and they'd still have to pump because they've got three gas mains that they can't, they can't get by physically because the depth of the sewer is pretty much in line with where those gas mains are, the water main is on the other side, just because the road goes up and down as you know. So if we get to a valley on that tail end, all of a sudden those houses that, yeah, they have a gravity sewer going by, but they're not getting the benefit of the gravity sewer. The town's paying more to put in gravity sewer when that property's still going to have a, have a grinder pump. It didn't, it stopped making, it stopped making sense for you to, to proceed that way. So that's why we made that change. I don't know if that helps or not.
I'll hold further comments till later, Jim.
Thank you, Michael. Pete, you have anything? Or Don?
Yeah, I get what we don't know, but here's what we do know. I mean, that's what Andrew was talking about before. The same guy who wrote the legislation that enabled this whole process was the guy who spoke earlier. It has been, it's gone past the tentative approval into a final approval on the intended use list as of about two weeks ago.
Correct.
That immediately triggers the rooms tax allocation because you cannot get anything from the county to buy down the principal unless you have an approved IUP. So if we walk away from this, that's about seven to eight million bucks. That I do know. I, I don't know some of the variables we're talking about, but unfortunately, the timing is the timing. So I'll know more tomorrow about what the overall board is going to vote because that's, that'll give you the 25%. But that's a commitment, that's not like a guess. There's a list of people that they get and I think the town administrator's been getting that through the years when they make disbursements under those IUPs for the previous projects. Would that be a fair statement? So we're at that point right now. It's, I'm not guessing that we might get that money.
Yep.
So again, I get that there's some variables. It's an absolute fact that we're walking away between seven and eight million bucks a total when you count the 0% and it can't go above two something percent because that's part of the commitment too with the state, that they're signing a contract with you.
Yes, so there's, there's no guarantee you'll get 0, but you are, by being listed, I think you're, you are eligible for 2% SRF. That's, that's there.
Those are the only points I wanted to make.
Yep.
Pete?
I'm good.
Yep, I'm good as well. I thank you for bringing this information to us.
Okay.
Anything else from the board before we let them go? Thank you both.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And moving on to 10 contracts. We're gonna, we're gonna hold on, on the contracts. We need a little bit more information on most of them. So we're going to move past contracts and go to town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, just a reminder, as we heard, town meeting is next week. So what that means for the board, the team and I have prepped for you to have board meetings every night of town meeting. So we'll know where we're going to be scheduled in one of the side rooms at the community center. Expectation would be certainly for Monday night in case there's anything the board needs to discuss or comments from FinCom. We'll also have that for Tuesday night, assuming we go a second night. And what the heck, just for belt and suspenders, we'll have a room ready for Wednesday.
Don't say it.
Other than that, I've got nothing else to report.
Let's look for a member to report. Pete? Don?
How was your vacation, Pete?
When was it?
That's it.
Julie?
I aspire to be as tanned as Pete. But no, I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Oh, should you do a adjournment?
Second.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.